Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, March 25th, 2021. I'm trustee Melissa Nedermeier, Mayor Pro Tem, chairing the public hearing this evening. This is the public hearing for the 2021 budget for the Village of Willow Springs. The time is 6:47, and this meeting is called to order. Clerk Manella, can we please take a roll call?
Trustee Burks?
Aye. Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Nedermeier?
Here.
Posh?
Here.
Moon?
Here.
President Carpino?
Thank you. Completes the roll. Let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty-
With liberty and justice-
-for all.
Thank you very much. And I will remind everyone that we are also simultaneously running the meeting by Zoom. So as you know, we have trustee Burks attending by Zoom and public participants as well. We will begin now with the public hearing on the 2021 budget. Administrator Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, we changed the fiscal year late last year from May 1st to January 1st. That triggered the necessity for an eight-month budget that we approved in December and triggered the construction of a new full-year budget to begin January 1st of this year. The budget you have before you is that budget. We had an abbreviated time in which to compile the budget, but it was completed in consultation with the department heads, the finance chairman, the village engineer, our IT professional, and the village treasurer. We all worked together on this. I met with each of the department heads individually, went through their asks, and incorporated as much as we could. In fact, I don't think there was much we couldn't incorporate. You'll give me one moment. I'm going to admit Ernie to the meeting.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Ernie Moon has joined the hearing at 6:49.
He's not yet connected to the sound. There's Treasurer Zabinski.
Treasurer Zabinski is also joining the meeting at 6:49.
Ernie, I'll unmute Ernie.
Well, I'm definitely the farthest away.
Okay. Some of the highlights for this budget are the 10% appropriation over the budget was observed in general across funds. That gives us sufficient room should we receive additional revenues for programs that we want to do. We will be able to do it with that 10% appropriation. We have a projected surplus through across all non-debt funds of $37,000, almost 38. 38,000. And those include the Corporate Fund, the Sewer Fund, the MFT Fund, the Commuter Parking Fund, the E911 Fund, the Non-Home Rule Sales Tax Fund. That's across all those funds. We have a surplus this year. Some of the other highlights are we added $50,000 for engineering fees for the compliance with the INI requirements of MWRD. This is a requirement that all of our sewers be scoped and videoed for leaks and infiltration so we can comply. If the engineer were here, I'd ask them for the compliance date. But this $50,000 moves us much closer to compliance, to full compliance. There's $175,000 that was programmed this year for road resurfacing projects and some of the other areas that were not programmed for it. We do have the hot box that we can do small areas of patching and fixing and kind of patch the roads together so we don't have to run into doing an expensive repair on those roads this year. And then finally, this accounts for a 2% salary increase. Actually, it's 3%. If we award the salary increase on January 1st, which would put everybody on cycle to the fiscal year, which is what we've always done. Every year, we've done a 3% increase. But if we award it in January, it amounts to a 2% increase because at the end of the line, the dollar amount is the same as if we gave it 3% starting May 1st. So at this point, I would ask the board to make the sailor increases for non-union employees to begin January 1st of this year at 2%, unless it is your wish to wait until May and make it 3% in May or some other percentages you may choose to direct me with. With that, are there any questions for me from board members?
With the salary increase, the question is whether or not to increase at 2% retroactively or 3% in May, that being the same dollar amount at the end of the year. Is that something that we would need to decide here in the hearing? Or do we decide it during the meeting?
Yeah.
What is the best way to go about that, maybe?
Yes, because that's basically the office employees and the public works employees, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but you don't need to decide it during this meeting.
Okay.
I mean, since the dollar amount isn't going to change the appropriation, you don't need to decide it during this meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Kelly.
You're the expert.
Any other questions from the board members about the budget?
Did you say 2% in January and 3% in April?
In May.
May, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from the board members about the budget? I'd first like to open it to any questions from the audience here in person. Do we have anybody that could have questions here attending in the audience? None, so we'll open it up to questions from members via Zoom.
If you're on Zoom and you would like to ask a question or comment on the budget, just raise your hand. If you don't know where that function is, you can just turn your video camera on and wave your hand in the air so we can see it. Okay, here's one on the phone. Do you want to ask? Oh, I think that's two.
Is she wishing to ask a question?
The ones that are on the phone, I will. Do you want me to ask?
Yes, let's go through and ask.
Okay. Phone number ending in 829. Do you have any questions? I went ahead and allowed you to unmute. Okay.
They're still muted on mine.
Okay. Then this other phone number ending in 890. Do you?
That's also still muted.
Okay. What else? Well, do you want to just go?
Yeah.
Okay. How about Clarence Seema? Would you have anything? Okay. And I will go to, as to unmute Tom Ara.
Yes, we'll go through this, and then you're welcome to ask questions, Carol.
Okay, there's nobody that wished to ask questions from Zoom.
Thank you, Carol. Did you have a question?
Can you step forward? I'm sorry. Yes. And if you could talk into the top of it.
I was asking about the public library subsidy, and I seen that in 2020, it was $1,150, and it's going up to, the actual budget is $12,000, and the appropriation is even a little bit more. Why is there such a big increase in that?
I'm sorry.
For the library one?
We've budgeted the same amount year over year of $12,000. Most of the time, we only use between $1,000 and $2,000. It depends on how many residents want to go over there and take advantage of it. If more residents took advantage of it, we'd need that amount in the budget to cover it.
So it's just kind of built in in case you need more.
Correct.
Let me ask you this about the library thing, and I don't know if this actually go with the budget. I know that's for the library over there by Hinsdale, correct? By Hinsdale South?
It's for Indian Prairie.
Okay. So does it always have to be that library? Because I think people on this side would probably go like something closer to us. Because I know some of the other towns, they just do X amount of dollars towards wherever you want to go.
Once you get the card from Indian Prairie, it opens the doors to a lot of libraries in the area. I don't know offhand exactly which ones, but I believe La Grange, Western Springs, and a bunch of others are included.
Any of the SLS libraries are included, which is almost all.
Which is almost all of them, yes.
Would that be like Bridgeview, Justice, Hodgkins?
Yes. Now, if somebody wanted to go to Justice, the issue with Justice was they wanted everything paid upfront. And then the resident would have to come and submit for reimbursement from us.
Okay.
That was a little tougher to do. You know, we wind up issuing one check a month over to Indian Prairie. But if, you know, with the residents coming in and getting reimbursed for the subsidy if they went to Justice, say.
So do you know, like, what is the subsidy that the village pays?
We pay $50.
$50?
$50 regardless of which library.
Okay, so does it? Because I'm like, I don't know if all libraries charge the same or not. Because I know when my kids were little, I mean, I have five kids that we went here. But we always usually went like to Bedford Park or Bridgeview to those libraries because that's closer for us.
Sure.
But I mean, I know where that library is at.
Well, I can certainly talk to Bridgeview and Bedford about an IGA with them and see if they'll, you know, knock the Willow Springs residents down by 50 and then bill it.
Hodgkins is very close, too.
Hodgkins is close, yes.
Because I think it would be kind of nice to have different options.
I agree.
We have no entering IGA.
Hodgkins is probably the newest, too.
Okay, that sounds good.
So the way each library has a different rate, because the way the fee is calculated, it's based on the EAV of your house multiplied by the rate for that library district. Okay, and then the village will subsidize $50 of that calculation. Okay? Each library has their own rate. We have only entered into an IGA with Indian Prairie, right? Yeah, Indian Prairie. And there's an Indian Trails, too, and I keep getting confused, sorry. And so, you know, if we could enter into a library that had a cheaper rate, you know, and then you'd be able to use that card at any of the SLS libraries. All right.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
Any other questions from the board members about the budget spread? I think did you say, no? Okay. And no other questions from the audience? So there being no more questions or discussion, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make that.
Motion by Ernie, second by trustee Posh, sorry, trustee Moon, and trustee Posh as the second. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Nedermeier?
Aye.
Posh?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carries, and the public hearing is adjourned at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Since it's 7:00 PM, we can move right into our village board meeting. So again, today is Thursday, March 25th, 2021. This is the village board meeting for the Village of Willow Springs. I am Melissa Nedermeier, trustee mayor pro tem, chairing the meeting this evening in Mayor Carpino's absence. We have the meeting also being conducted via Zoom. We have trustees Tom Burks and trustee Ernie Moon attending via Zoom, as well as Finance Director Kelly Zabinski. The time is 7:00 PM, and this meeting is called to order. Clerk Manella, can we please do the roll call?
Trustee Burks?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Nedermeier?
Here.
Posh?
Here.
Moon?
Here.
Carpino?
Okay, that completes the roll. Let's all please stand again for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
All right, we have no presentations this evening, so we'll move to the first item of business, disposition of previous minutes. We have in our Board Pack meeting minutes from March 11, 2021, but then on the dais here, we were given amended minutes, which are exactly the same. Clerk Manella tells me there was just one change in a date. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes before us for the meeting of March 11?
Second.
Motion by trustee Posh, second by trustee Kennedy. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Nedermeier?
Aye.
Posh?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Carr?
Motion carries, minutes approved. Onto reports of officials. First is that of the village president. I will take that one. First, I'd just like to say happy birthday to trustee Mike Kennedy. Today is his birthday. Sorry, Brent, I think I just stole part of your report, it seems from your reaction.
Yeah, mine, too. Him and my brother are born in the same day.
Happy birthday. Today is the day. Also, happy spring. We are now in spring, and we've got some events coming up. The newsletter is out, and it's received a lot of positive feedback. I want to say a lot of residents have expressed that they're really happy with the newsletter. And one thing to look forward to, and again, Mary Jane, I apologize if I'm stealing part of your report on this, but the Easter egg hunt is this Saturday, not this Saturday, the following Saturday before Easter, April 3rd. At Lyons Park, it'll be at 11:00, and then at Willow Park, it'll be at 12:00. So that is in the newsletter, along with a lot of other good happenings coming up. That concludes my report for the president. So we'll go on to the village administrator, Brent Woods.
Well, this is unusual for me. I don't have much of a report tonight. The only thing I had on my report was to wish our trustee, Mike Kennedy, happy birthday, a former military veteran and longtime resident. Happy birthday, Mike.
Thank you.
And that would conclude my report.
All right, thank you. Village clerk, Clerk Manella.
Thank you. Couple things this evening. Start out with the Water Commission. The examination of the High Tower is going to begin in April. If you recall, we're going to repaint it and basically just kind of refurbish it and make sure it's up to snuff. The hydrant painting will be starting in May to June, and then the smart meter replacement will begin later in the summer. So that ends my Water Commission report. Just to add a little bit more detail to the egg hunt, there will be two of them on the Saturday before Easter. 11:00 AM will be at Lyons Park, 201 Park Street, and noon will be at Willow Park, 10739 Chaucer Drive. Then, the last thing I have is we have a resolution, 2021 R-06, approving and releasing certain executive session minutes. You have had a chance to review those minutes. There are two sets of minutes, one from 6:23, 2016, and one from 7:27, 2016, that we are looking to approve and release.
There a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Kennedy, second by trustee Burks. Thank you. Any discussion on those executive session minutes? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Nedermeier?
Aye.
Posh?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Okay. So the last item I have is that, you know, one of the things we did recently was post the released executive session minutes on the website. So one of the residents, who's currently on the Zoom call right now, took a look at them and recognized that one of the executive sessions from 2016 referenced a release of executive session minutes for 2011 and 2012. So in going back and attempting to retrieve those executive session minutes, I was met with about the same thing we had the first time we tried to do that. So I have, of the five sets that we were looking for, there are three sets that I have to either find a recording for. You know, one of them, I've got three different files labeled with a different date, but if you look in the file, it's actually the correct date. And then all of them are blank. None of them have any actual notes in it. So it's basically, I appreciate having this pointed out to me so I can go and try and retrieve them, but I wasn't able to just put them up because it wasn't that simple. So that ends my report.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Onto village engineer, Dan Lynch.
No report, Madam President.
Very good. Village attorney, Erica.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, there's one item for the village board's consideration this evening, and that is approval of ordinance 2021-0-07, adopting the 12-month budget and fiscal year January 1 through December 31, 2021. And that is the hearing that you had this evening as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2021-0-7?
So moved.
Second.
By trustee Posh, second by trustee Burks. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Nedermeier?
Aye.
Posh?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Carr?
Motion carries. Ordinance 2021-0-7.
And that's all I have this evening, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Onto village treasurer, Kelly Zabinski.
Kelly's muted.
Okay.
Sorry, I mute myself. Thank you very much, Madam President. Good evening, everybody. I have nothing tonight except to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Thank you, you, too. Okay, we'll go on to reports of standing committee, Building and Zoning Committee, trustee Carr.
No report this evening.
Thank you. Finance and Administration Committee, trustee Posh.
Madam President, I have one item tonight for approval, and that's payroll and payroll expenses in the amount of $94,240.30. All fund expenses in the amount, Total expenditures of $359,337.71. And I would like to make a motion to approve payroll and warrants for March 25th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Posh, and the second by trustee Moon. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, if none, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Nedermeier?
Aye.
Posh?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Okay, motions approved.
Thank you, Madam President. That ends my report.
Thank you, trustee Posh. License and Franchise Committee, trustee Moon?
Yes, I don't believe we have any new ones that I know of that came in. Do you have any, Brent?
Yeah, yes, sir, we do. Teamsters Joint Council Number 25 has filed their application for a business license. They do pass zoning. They pass their sign compliance. They're in full compliance with all inspections, fire and building. And the village staff is recommending approval of said license. I believe we have someone from the joint council here this evening.
Would you like to step forward?
You're welcome.
State your name. Thank you for being here.
My name's Mike DeGrazia. I am the Executive Director of Teamsters Joint Council 25, 160 Market Street. I am here on behalf of the Executive Board of Teamsters Joint Council 25, Mayor J. Hancock, President. And we are here for consideration for a business license. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Last name is D.I., capital G, R.A.Z.I.A. First name, Michael.
I was not that far off. Okay, thank you.
Does the board have any questions?
I have one, Mike. Do you have, tell us a little about your union, and are you just moving into town? And where were you before?
Well, we were at Park Ridge, Illinois, on Higgins Road, and we have purchased this location here at 160 Market. So this will serve as our headquarters for the joint council. The joint council of the Teamsters is an umbrella organization. It oversees 25 different locals with jurisdictional differences and jurisdictional crafts. We represent over 100,000 in the state of Illinois, men and women in different capacities of jobs, everything from, what we like to say, airline pilots to zookeepers. And with that being said, we will be holding, that will serve, 160 Market will serve as our day-to-day office. And that's really all it is. The Teamsters represent 1.4 million members in the United States. So we are happy to be in Willow Springs, looking forward to working with the community, and hope to be good neighbors.
Great.
Very good, thank you. So most of the work in the space will be just clerical office work? Is that, or will there be other use of the space?
Well, we have, it'll be office space, probably about five people in there at any given time. And then the joint council, the board members meet once a month, like yourselves, and they conduct their business. So we do have a political department. We also have an organizing department. It will also be headquartered at 160 Market.
And it says here you're looking for a target open of April 1st. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. All right, any other questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve the business?
Well, Madam President, I'd like to make the motion to allow the license for the.
Trustee Moon. Okay, we have the motion by trustee Moon. Is there a second? By trustee Posh. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Nedermeier.
Aye.
Hosh. Moon.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Good night. All right, and I'm guessing that concludes license and franchise committee report, correct?
There are no.
That's it. Thank you.
There's no further licenses for you to present.
Onto municipal building and grounds committee, trustee Kennedy. Thank you, Mike. Public safety committee, that's me. I first want to take a minute to talk about beautification commission business. The beautification commission applied for the governor's hometown award. It was considered and it made it to the round to give presentations for the project that was Legacy Garden Park. And we just found out today that although we were considered and we gave the presentation, we were close, but we did not get that award this year. However, we were invited to try again next year, so that's what we will do. And again, with beautification business, Legacy Garden Park is accepting applications now as well as the buy a brick program and the cleanup project that is happening in April. So please take a look for information about that in the newsletter as well as the website. That concludes the beautification commission report. And I will move on to the public safety committee report. My only report is that April is distracted drivers awareness month. So I just wanted to remind everybody as we move into April, but always be mindful to avoid distracted driving. It's a major cause for accidents and injury. And please just be safe while driving. Put the cell phones down. That concludes my report for public safety, and I will ask Chief Fritz if he has anything.
I give the board our monthly incident reports of 79 incident reports that came in. Citations for the month from March 1st till today, 171 citations have been issued and nine motor vehicle accident crashes we've handled. Also, recognize too, the last board meeting I mentioned about our autism awareness program. I have the registration forms all ready to go. So if anyone, any family's interested, we could send it through email. We could drop it off for you, mail it, pick it up, whatever you want to do. And in recognition of our autism awareness, just want to make every, April is also autism awareness month to learn about autism and some of the special effects that are dealing with it. So month of April, you know, take a look at that and learn about autism. And that's my report, Mayor.
Chief, are the applications, did you say they're ready for the autism awareness program? If people wanted to?
Yeah.
Okay, those are ready. Very good.
Can I ask, Chief, are they, is that just for Willow Springs restaurants, residents, or other cities also? What you have available?
For the autism awareness program, trustee?
Yes.
Yeah, that's for Willow Springs residents. Because it handles for when we go on calls for service there.
Okay, thank you.
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto public works committee, trustee Burks.
Yes, I'm actually in Las Vegas. I put money on 3 and 25 for Mike and my brother, and it was a big loser. But other than that, it's been a good time. I don't have anything to report. I'll leave that up to Keith. And happy birthday, Mike.
Thank you.
Just an update on the lift station retrofit. I got complete prices today for the install and the equipment is right around $15,309 complete to do all five lift stations, as with the installation and the equipment. And then it would be a $1,200 a year total phone bill for all five lift stations with the, once the service is put in. Given the, okay to go ahead tomorrow, it'd be probably around May, beginning of May that they will be complete.
Okay, so did you say that figure? Could you repeat that figure, Keith?
The total figure is $15,309.
Okay, and that includes installation?
Installation, everything. That equipment itself is $13,234. The installation is $2,075. It'll be $1,200 a year total phone bill once we are done.
Great. Anything else? Okay, thank you. There, is there any old business? Any new business? Public comment? Is there anybody from Zoom wishing to make public comment?
Again, if you don't know where the raise hand button is, you can switch your camera on and just raise your hand that way.
Make one more comment, please. Just looking at this report, don't forget to lock your car doors.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mike. Reminder that break-ins of vehicles parked on driveways, they're mostly with the doors that are unlocked. So please, everyone, continue to keep your car doors locked on your driveways. Did we have anybody from Zoom?
Raise their hand, nobody flipped on the camera.
Okay. There is no need for executive session tonight, so is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that.
We'll have the motion by trustee Moon, the second by trustee Posh. Discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Nedermeier.
Aye.
Hosh.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Carr.
All ayes. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 7:20. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening, those of you on Zoom.
It's only 5:20 here.